Before I start the prayer, we would like to remember Priscilla Pochet and Errol Cola, relatives of our councilmember Gregory Carroll, who recently passed. Let us bow our heads and remember that we are in the presence of the Lord. God our Father, eternal and omnipotent Creator and Lord of the universe, you have set the earth on its foundation and all elements of nature obey your command. You give food to all flesh, cover the heavens with clouds, and provide rain to the earth. We humbly beseech you, Lord most high, to keep us safe from all dangers and to calm all storms of life that threaten us, especially the attack of whirlwinds, tornadoes, the calamity and destruction of hurricanes, the din and damage of hailstorms, the striking of thunderbolts and lightning, and the devastation of floods and tidal waves. May we be secure in your loving protection, seek your will in all our experiences, and serve you always with grateful hearts. We ask this through Christ our Lord, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Empistata, would you lead us into the floor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You have a quorum this evening. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have Item 1, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of May 21st, 2015. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Celebracion Hispana de Kenner Incorporated on June 27th, 2015, and June 28th, 2015, at Lake Town, being property owned by the city of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 1883/15, interfaith Christian fellowship to hold a public gathering on July 25th, 2015, from 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. for a march at Providence Baptist Church. Item 3B is application number 1890/15, Lake Punch Train Basin Foundation, to hold a public gathering on June 12th, 2015, and June 13th, 2015, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for a fishing rodeo at the Kenner Boat Launch in Lake Town. Mr. Chairman, this concludes your consent agenda this evening.
Motion by Councilmember Conley, second by Councilmember DeFrances. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0 for your consent agenda. Under the public appearance agenda this evening, we have Item 9, public hearings for final passage. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 11,866, an ordinance adopting the operating budget for the city of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016, and providing for related matters.
Motion by Councilmember Rayno, second by Councilmember DeFrances, to open a public hearing on summary ordinance 11,866. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0 to open your hearing.
Okay, we're now in a public hearing on summary ordinance 11,866. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, motion by Councilmember Rayno, second by DeFrances, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0 for approval.
Uh, motion.
I mean, to close.
Okay, motion by Rayno, second by DeFrances, on approval. Seeing no discussion.
Mr. Chairman, we've received the request this evening to amend the budget, please. We have two amendments this evening. One amendment would be to reduce the council salary and benefit line items to eliminate the vacant assistant council clerk slash research and budget analyst position in the amount of $70,149, and add $70,149 to the demolition expense line item in the code enforcement and administration budget, and then to increase the information technology salary and benefits line items for a 5% increase to the director position in the amount of $3,858 to be funded through the general fund balance.
Okay, we're not eliminating that position, are we? Is that what you read?
No, sir, we're just moving the mon-
Just zeroing out the... Okay. Okay, so we have an amendment. Seeing no discussion on the amendment, I would like to do the amendment, vote on the amendment in globo. So councilmembers, please vote.
If I could get a motion for your amendment, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Rayno, second by DeFrances, on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0 to amend.
And now we're going to vote on approval. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0. Item 9B is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 11,867, an ordinance adopting the capital budget for the city of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016.
Motion by Councilmember Rayno, second by Councilmember Conley, to open a public hearing on summary ordinance 11,867. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0 to open your hearing.
Okay, we're now in a public hearing on summary ordinance 11,867. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, motion by Rayno, second by Conley, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0 to close your hearing.
Okay, on adoption, motion by Rayno, second by Conley. Seeing no discussion, I believe we have an amendment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have an amendment this evening to remove West Esplanade pedestrian and transit improvements, the match for FTA/RTA grant, and add Williams Boulevard pedestrian and transit improvements, Phase 3, West Napoleon Avenue to West Metairie Avenue, the match for FTA/RTA grant.
Okay, we're just moving those funds from one project to another, so we're retaining our grant. Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, seeing no discussion up here, councilmembers, please vote.
Your motion for your amendment would be Rayno.
I'm sorry, motion by Rayno, second by Conley, on the amendment.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, please vote. We missing one?
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0 on your amendment.
Okay, now on legislation, seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote. Oh.
You're voting to approve now your capital budget, please. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. I'd like to say something before you go to the next item, please. This budget was approved because all of our councilmembers worked together with the administration and worked out all of the issues that we had. Normally, when we go into budgets like this, it ends up with a lot of discussion, but we've discussed all of this stuff prior to bringing it up, and that's why this budget passed so quickly. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item 9C is a public hearing regarding a resolution authorizing a public hearing to be held on June 4th, 2015, during the regularly scheduled meeting of the council of the city of Kenner to allow the citizens of Kenner the opportunity to comment on the Kenner Police Department's application to the United States Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program for the fiscal year 2015, local solicitation of $12,680 for police officer overtime for law enforcement activities and criminal investigations.
Motion by Councilmember DeFrances, second by Councilmember Segur. And this is a public hearing, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Is there anybody in the public, in the audience, that would like to speak?
I'm going to go ahead and take a vote to open your hearing real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Councilmembers, please vote.
One... Wait, one second. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-2. Councilmembers Klein and Empistata have left the meeting.
Okay, so is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember DeFrances, second by Segur. Councilmembers, seeing no discussion, please vote. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's all right, I haven't ended it yet.
Chief. Can you get him on?
Yeah, it's on.
Does it work?
Oh, his is on.
One of them works. Gotcha. This Byrne grant is the seventh consecutive year the police department has received the Byrne grant. The only part I don't like to say is it's been getting less every year since 2009, so now we use this for felony follow-up investigations. Historically, it's all been diverted, directed to burglary follow-up, but it is open to homicides and all felonies, so we now have the ability to use it for any follow-up investigations. That's it.
Thank you, Chief. Any discussion? Councilmembers, please vote. Did you... I didn't see anything up there. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0 for approval. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution selecting the Tom's Picayune as the official journal for the city of Kenner for fiscal year 2015 to 2016.
Motion by Councilmember Rayno, second by Councilmember Conley. Seeing no discussions, councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 11,870, an ordinance ratifying the proposal from Berkeley Insurance Company with an A.M. best rating of A-plus superior 15 for commercial package liability insurance at a cost not to exceed $299,000 for the period of July 1st, 2015 through July 1st, 2016.
Motion by Councilmember Conley, second by Councilmember DeFrances. Councilmember DeFrances.
This will take only one second, really. I just want to congratulate the administration and all of the other people that worked on this. Anytime we can save money in the city of Kenner, it's a good day for our citizens, so thank you for that hard work.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other discussion, councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 11,871, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Louisiana Lift and Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $8,145 for the purchase of one trailer-mounted light tower in accordance with letter bid number 15-1534 for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilmember Segur. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 11,872, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Economical Janitorial and Paper Supplies LLC for a six-month contract to supply copy paper for various city of Kenner departments in accordance with telephone bid number T15-2292 in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Motion by Councilmember Rayno, second by Councilmember Conley. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 11,873, an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Maxford Construction Company LLC in the amount of $16,558,000 for the Kenner Waste Water Treatment Plant Number 3 Improvements Project in accordance with sealed bid number 15-6262 for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilmember Segur. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 11,874, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Nor-Tex Concrete Lift and Stabilization Incorporated to provide labor, materials, and equipment necessary for concrete pavement lifting on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 15-6271 in an amount not to exceed $300,000 annually for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Segur, second by Councilmember Rayno. Seeing no discussion, councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolution in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance amending the 2014-2015 operating capital budget and the 2013-14, 2012-13, 11-12, and 6-7 years capital budgets to make necessary year-end budget adjustments. Item 16B is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and approving the proposed fiscal year 2015 annual action plan of the Community Development Block Grant Program in the amount of $464,693 and the Home Investment Partnership Program Grant in the amount of $116,599 for the Community Development Department. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the award of the fiscal year 2014 Emergency Solutions Grant funding in the amount of $56,000 by the Louisiana Housing Corporation and amending the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget to allocate said funding for the Department of Community Development. Item 16D is an ordinance approving a conditional use for the Lewis Armstrong International Airport, North Terminal, and all related facilities and infrastructure located within airport property boundaries with which property is zoned AH1 Aviation Heavy Industrial. Item 16E is an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the East Jefferson Levy District and the city of Kenner for the installation and maintenance of a surveillance camera at the Kenner Police Training Center at 1939 Reverend Richard Wilson Drive in Kenner, Louisiana 70062. Item 16F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received for an annual contract to provide repair, maintenance, and/or troubleshoot of overhead lighting lamps, fixtures, poles, foundation, and wiring on all city properties on an as-needed basis not to exceed $300,000 annually in accordance with sealed bid number 15-6279 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16G is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Bayou Tree Service Incorporated to provide tree work on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 15-6278 in an amount not to exceed $50,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. Item 16H is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two Laseron FI 7280 flatbed scanners with associated software warranty and maintenance services in the amount of $9,758.50 from Laseron Systems Incorporated doing business as HOV services available through state contract number 406077 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16I is an ordinance approving the purchase of the Tyler Go Docs module and related services in the amount of $6,500 for the Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications. Item 16J is an ordinance approving a four-year professional services agreement with DuPlante, Ratman, Hogan, and Mayer LLP to provide audit services for the office of the Kenner Council in accordance with Section 2.28 of the City of Kenner Home Real Charter and Request for Proposal Number 15-6272. Item 16K is an ordinance approving a services agreement by and between the city of Kenner and Base Logistics LLC to provide food services for disaster and/or emergency events in accordance with Request for Proposal Number 15-6273. Item 16L is an ordinance approving a services agreement with Base Logistics LLC to provide emergency supplies and services for disaster and/or emergency events in accordance with Request for Proposal Number 15-6274. Item 16M is an ordinance approving a second amended and restated agreement for wastewater operations, maintenance, and management services by and between the city of Kenner and Viola Water North America South LLC. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees. We have none. Item 18 is new business.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Item 17?
Yes. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Councilman, Councilmember Conley, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to say that this morning, the mayor and I and a lot of Kenner residents attended the Southeast Louisiana Flood Protection Authority East Board Meeting to discuss the recent flooding, or multiple flooding episodes on Grand Lake Boulevard and up in north Kenner on Acadia, and the board was very, very concerned with some potential design flaws in the design of the drainage project for the levee, and they are going to have another board meeting June 18th about it, and if anybody's interested, you can look at their website. It's the Southeast Louisiana Flood Protection Authority East, but it was a very good representation this morning by the administration, who had several department heads present, the mayor, myself, Councilman Zahn from Jefferson Parish was in attendance, and of course, several of the residents that are impacted by this, the runoff of the levee as a result of the work that was done over the last three years. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Conley, and Councilmember Carroll, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to personally take this time to be able to thank a number of the Kenner departments, the administration, the Public Works Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department. As we all know, city of Kenner, particularly District 1, where I live at, we had a little weather situation the day after Memorial Day. It could have been, it could have been a whole lot worse, but thank God it wasn't. To be able to have the impact, to have the direct impact from all of these departments, Public Works, Recreation, Code, everybody, Police Department, to come out there almost as soon as it happened is something that sometimes we take for granted, sometimes we don't give the accolades where they are deserving. This particular time was a personal thing where I actually live at, that I was able to see the benefit of having a well-established Police Department, Public Works, Mr. Gonzalez, Code, Ms. Vallot, and everybody else. The neighbors were able to come out and see the trucks rolling, see action, and that's what it's all about, when people see the entities in work going out asking questions, there's no denying that. So, you know, it wasn't as bad as it could have been, we thank God for that, but to be able to see the administration and all of these departments come out and to show, you know, that they care and that when something happens, they're going to respond accordingly, even before the hurricane season, we've had two tornadoes, I guess, in north Kenner, now one in south Kenner, and, you know, on behalf of everyone in District 1, I personally would like to thank all you guys for your support. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. Okay, I think that's it.
Item 18, new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and/or motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Um, Ms... Is it Mr. Monty Briggs? Mr. Briggs, if you would give your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Monty Briggs. I live at 4110 West Louisiana State Drive, and I'm not here this evening to make any complaints or bellyache about anything, but I want to give thanks where it is due to the mayor and the council members for approving the walkway named after Hank, or Henry Hank Palito over here in the park. I also want to give out a double shout to Ms. Donna Hawn for keeping me informed so that I could let other organizations know what was going on that particular day. And once again, I want to thank the mayor and all the council members for approving that walkway, and thank Ms. Donna Hawn and that for keeping me informed so I could keep other military organizations such as the VFW, because I don't know if you all know, but I am the commander of VFW Post 7732 right here in Kenner, and we're the ones that take care of the wreath every Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And once again, I want to thank the mayor and all the council members for approving that walkway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service, and thank you for those kind words. We appreciate it. Mr. Al Morella.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 43 years. I got some, I want to respond to some comments made in here on, at the May 7th meeting. First, I want to commend Councilwoman DeFrances for her straightforwardness on the issue of Entergy and a maintenance program on the wooden poles that they're responsible for back here. Now, I want to respond to you, Councilman Rayno. No one said that Entergy was responsible for all the wooden poles back here, but since you made it a point that Cox is responsible for some of them, I suggest you do what Councilwoman DeFrances did and submit a request to get a copy of their maintenance program on the poles they're responsible for. Now, I want to direct this to you, Councilman Carroll. On the May 19th, I want to comment, May 19th, on a community meeting in Susan Park Gymnasium relative to the expansion of the airport impacting the residents of Susan Park. In my opinion, it was the most unproductive meeting that I've ever attended. I've talked to, I've talked to some of the residents in Susan Park on their way out the door, and I think they left there with more distrust in their elected officials than they had when they arrived. Now, I want to say this also to you, Councilman Carroll. I would, I would advise you to familiarize yourself with the state open meetings laws, because otherwise, at the next community meeting that you host, you could have some problems, particularly if I'm at that meeting and I, I want to speak on items on that agenda. Anybody got any comments, any questions for me?
I'm going to let you finish, Al, and then I'm going to give the floor to one of the councilmembers, and actually, I have a comment as well, but...
And once again, I want to reiterate what my commander said of 7732. I want to thank everyone involved, the administration, the council, and most of all, our commander, Monty Briggs, for getting this done on Memorial Day ceremonies. Thank you. That's all, Keith.
All right. Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. And let me just clear this out, and before I give the floor to Councilmember Carroll, I just wanted to say, you mentioned Cox, and in my conversation with you, not once that I mentioned Cox. I mentioned AT&amp;T owns part of the poles and Entergy owns part of the poles, and I'd be more than happy to try to get that information that you asked for. I wouldn't expect it by the next council meeting. It may take a little while to get that, but I'll work on it. Okay? And Councilmember Carroll, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Morella, first I'd like to say thank you for coming to the meeting, but I also would like to let you know, you are not a spokesman for the people of District 1. You may have spoke to a couple of people, which is, which is your prerogative, but that was not the first meeting that we've had. I've talked to a number of people. Some agree, some disagree. Some just don't like the project as it is as a whole, but for you to be able to come in and to assume that you're speaking on behalf of the people in District 1, that's not fair, especially for the people unless you went around and spoke to every person or did a fair sample. It's not fair to come to say if you spoke to a couple of people. You can come to the meeting, everybody was invited to, I want you to be able to come and listen, but the people that came to the meeting, I did not get that response that you had, and I happen, I think I spoke to more people than you did because I stayed from the beginning to the end, but the fact is, this is a project that is going, that's going on. We will have other meetings to address concerns, which is the way things go. Actually, I have a meeting tomorrow with Mr. Gonzalez to address some issues that are going on for this particular project, and all, all projects within District 1 we're going to be talking about. So, you know, I don't think it's fair to come here and say that it was the most, in your opinion, you're entitled to your opinion, I just wish you would have stated that first to say, "In my opinion," and if you did, then that's exactly what it was, your opinion. I totally disagree with you, first of all, and as far as the rules for the meeting, for the public meetings, I'm well aware of how they are supposed to be held, and I believe most of the people agree to the way they'll be held, and if you were speaking particularly about your particular time at the mic that you had, it was my concern not to let people come up and ask one question after the next, after the next, after the next. Had that happened, then I believe it would have gotten out of hand. I think everybody was given the opportunity to come up and ask a question, and maybe two questions, but when it go past that second question and you want to be... two questions, but when it go past that second question and you want to be able to define different things, it is not conducive for the meeting, I think, to be productive. If there are some things that you would like to speak to me about now even, I'll be more than welcome to talk to you about that, but in the future, if we're going to have the meeting, we have to have it in an orderly way. And I, and I think for the most part, most people realize that they had more questions that they probably couldn't get answered. Some people submitted questions, but you have to give everybody a chance to be able to ask different questions, because everybody had a different, some people have questions about, you know, the drainage, sewage, about the project, about safety. I just think we can't let one person get up there and try to dominate the meeting, and that was, that's my goal, to never let that happen. So, again, thank you for coming, you know, we look forward to you coming to other meetings. If you have other questions, please feel free to ask me, but, you know, I would just appreciate that you, in the future, to, to make it clear that in your opinion, and you are entitled to that, as opposed to, to say something, now people will listen to it and hear it and believe that you are speaking on behalf of everyone in that meeting, which wasn't the case. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Carroll. Before the mayor wants to speak, I just wanted to mention something that I think I forgot to mention. If you notice that Councilmember Empistata and Councilmember Klein left early, that's because both of their sons are in a championship playoff game, one on one team and one on the other, so they're out there, championship game starts at 6:15, and I just wanted to let people know. Mayor Yen, you have the floor.
And I think it's, I think that you failed to mention that they're both coaches, and that I think Mr. Klein holds a 2-0 record against Councilman Empistata, if that's not mistaken.
Oh, thank you.
I think there's a little rivalry there, and I think the District Four Councilman's putting the hurtin' on the District Five Councilman right now.
Thank you.
Keith, you run through such a fast meeting, I missed a couple of points, and I just want to thank all of the council for approving the budget. I was signing some stuff when y'all, when y'all did so, but thank you for all your hard work, thank you for making the budget hearings process a very pleasant process to go to. That's very pleasant, one of the most pleasant ones that I've ever been through, so I appreciate that. Y'all asked some very good questions, and I think we got a lot of dialogue accomplished. Just to touch on the airport, I want to, at this time, you know, thank my CAO, Mike Quigley, Councilwoman DeFrances, and Councilman Carroll. You know, the airport, since probably 2010, since almost 2010, has been having monthly meetings, of which the three of y'all have probably made every single one, and I thank y'all for being at those meetings and making sure, you know, y'all watch out for the best interest of the city of Kenner. I mean, Mike's representing me at those meetings, and, and I think we've got a good process in place and that the airport's moving forward in the right direction, so I thank y'all for, you know, attending those meetings. I know they can be long, I know they're not short meetings and they take time out of your day, but I want to thank the three of y'all for doing that. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. One minute. Okay. Motion by Councilmember DeFrances, second by Councilmember Conley to close the meeting. Thank you.